I would even let you sit up here during this one.
Uh.
So you can see how the canvas goes.
Okay.
It comes regularly.
So, the only thing left in here is this ballot.
Okay.
So everything that we need should be in here that we can need.
And I'm gonna ask you kind of do elementary so that we can see exactly what we're doing and why.
Say that again?
I'm asking you to do kind of elementary, you know, just like the seal. How when that goes on so that she understands.
Okay.
What for. Sorry, but.
Yeah, yeah, good, yes. After, after the election night and then all the forms and the, and the tapes and everything that we need in here that is concealed and kept with the ballots until the campus. And then commissioners can open this up and, and count and make sure that all of our numbers match the numbers on that. Make that work.
The tape.
The, the 100 tapes, the, what the machine that counts the ballots.
Okay.
And we have a report that we pull up of the Montana votes system. Montana votes is a statewide system that tracks every voter in every county statewide. Anytime somebody comes in to register to vote or anytime somebody switches counties or switches even precincts within a county, that has to be changed in Montana votes in order to make sure they're not voting two counties, voting two precincts, whatever. And so, when we do the canvas, they're, they're basically going over what we've done to make sure there's no discrepancies, no foul play, no errors, anything like that.
Okay.
But there should be three piles in here. We should have the poll book, there should be a list of reports, and there should be the tapes, the 100 tapes. And we should be able to get all the numbers we need out of there.
Sounds good to me.
So, who wants to be honest? I didn't bring a letter opener, I'm sorry.
Take the pocket knife. Thank you.
Don't lie for me.
Well, I'm pretty weak this time.
So, the ballots that are there, there should be 20 of them. We got two that were spoiled. If they're not spoiled, they were rejected because there were no signatures on them.
Okay.
They dropped them in the, in the box in our office and didn't sign them. So we, we can't count those because we haven't approved that that's who really voted that ballot. And then there's 18 that were, that were voided for one reason or another. We had a couple people move from, from our county to another county after the ballots had went out. We had some that just came too late for the election. They, they mailed them, but they mailed them too old. I, I made a trip to East, now this is the first time it's ever happened, but I had to make a run to East Ellen to pick up ballots at their post office in East Ellen. I called this, that they had six ballots there.
Oh wow.
So I was in East Ellen and I had quarter to four on election night, and then I came back and I was at our post office and then actually five o'clock, I'd been picking up the ballots here. So, all of the ballots that, that were in the post office at, by five o'clock, which is the midline, were counted. These ones that, that are part of this group came in like two, three days late. And so we just can't count those. They're just, they're not coming out this by five o'clock on the day of the election.
If you're voting at polls.
Yes.
Why do we have two Chris Christensen?
There were, there were a couple that.
Spoiled.
Spoiled their ballots because they voted them wrong.
Did they destroy them? You got another one that.
Yeah. There should be 20 there.
That's just the request. Why do we have the absentee? Oh, they're not, okay. I was wondering why they had a request for absentee and nothing back here, but.
Yeah, just, if they weren't registered to vote by the time we mailed the ballots out, then they come in and sign an absentee form and you give them a ballot. Or some of the, some of them, some of those should even be people that were on the absentee list and we mailed their ballot to them. Once they're on that absentee list, they're, they can be permanent absentee where they get a ballot for every election. They just have to.
Disclose with that.
Turn their address every, every, every year. And out of that 20, there were two that were, that were rejected. And if we look through the poll book, we can, we can see where they were rejected.
Is this the poll book now?
It should be.
I don't see a regular poll book.
I have to talk because it's the calculator, so sorry.
Oh, can I look?
Yes, you can.
Now, there should be. This might be the three for the poll book that I need. Since it wasn't the. Let me call Joyce real quick, she's the one that put it in here. I would just like to have it in members and looked at them, but I'm not sure. I thought we had a regular poll book too, but it's been a couple weeks since I've looked at it and. My mind is on balance and your books right now.
In taxes. Funny how that works of this time of year.
And is Joyce handy?
You guys do this with each election?
Yes. And on regular elections, I guess you say.
Joyce, this is done. We, we are not signing a poll book up here. Was there a regular poll book?
Fall reelection after four o'clock because they have time. And I can't think of any.
All of them.
They can't.
Okay, all right. This is the poll book, okay. All the handwritten ones. All right.
The ballot can come in late.
Just kind of forgot that. Thanks. All right, all right. This is what she used for the poll book.
But there's no numbers, so we have, no way of knowing.
No way of knowing.
You know, like say, this is one and then this was.
All page one, page two.
Right, not the page, no, I'm looking for the.
How many voters? I think she put those down like. Like that. And what she did was she just told them here and there's nine. C9 on the 23rd sheet. Let me have her come up because she's the one that did most of this part of it and she'll, I was in the back kind of.
I counted 21 of those.
You counted Chris Christensen twice.
Did I? Okay, thank you. I knew there was something I'd done.
Because I had it myself, that's exactly probably what you did because his ballot is there, then there's a request.
That's exactly what I did and I do remember seeing both names. Thank you.
And I'm Mrs. Doug again. Did you ask Joyce to come up here? All right, thanks. Good luck.
So you were saying they haven't told after, you can't do it until after four?
Right, provisional ballots.
General election?
Any election other than this.
Doesn't this have been considered a municipal or city?
Right, municipal election. A provisional ballot could be, I come in and I can vote, register to vote that day and vote. However, that's considered provisional ballot and it's put in a different pile and they have until Monday, Doug's office, to verify that that is the right person and they're not registered in another county somewhere else. So they have until Monday before they have to vote it already. Okay.
And I'll have that work come up and explain how she added that because I just know the night of the election, the county, every ballot came up to a 1707.
Everything, the block because Chris Christensen is going to be in here.
Hey, Julie.
Good morning, my dear.
To explain how they can figure out how many voters are on here in the poll book.
Okay, right here, this number is 20. This number for this day, okay, for 11:05, there were 20 voters because this is 20 on each sheet. Sorry, I have a breath, I walked up the steps.
Isn't that crazy?
Yeah, it is, that's awful.
I think the steps are the wrong.
See, that's why I have to use, I have to breathe in hard.
Right. We all do it.
Okay, then this is the 21st, today or the 23rd, excuse me. This part here is the 23rd. And then all on the 20, this is 20 on this page, 20 on this page. And then 20 on each page that's in here, and then you count this. Then this starts at 24th and that's why I put down here C9 on the 23rd sheet. And then after this, I learned, okay, put them all on their own sheet so it's easier to count them. And then the number I have here on the side.
Why would it not be easier to use a regular poll book?
Well, you know, that's what I thought too, but these are the mail ballot, these are the mail ballot forms that the Secretary of State says to use, so that's why I use these. Now, this might be just a second, it might be my not understanding everything correctly and using the poll book and thought you'd have to use a poll book for, well, I guess you wouldn't have to use a poll book. In my mind, I was using a poll book for every day because I was signing them in, so I guess I could have used just a regular poll book. Just my lack of knowledge, Elaine, my lack of familiarity with doing something different.
It looks like the poll book number one makes it easier for us rather than sit here, count one, two, three.
Right, right.
It also gives you a quick and easy way, you know, and then we'll say you put the date here off to the side and then that whole day is down here, then the next day is there. You're not skipping a line, it's just.
Right, and then you're counting. Okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
But I don't know if that was better for you or not.
Yeah, yeah, it, well, it sounds like it would have made it easier, you know, so that we could have had the 117. But in this case, you would have used, because there's 1700, you would, and how big, how long, how many numbers are in the poll book? I don't think that was.
Five. Yeah. Can I say that carefully?
So we would have used four or five poll books, one way or the other. So that is why. That might have been another reason why. Right now, I can't tell you exactly what I was thinking at that time, but because I had to sign them in anyway, that's why I just use this as the poll.
Well, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to tell you guys how to do this.
No, I'm just thinking. No, totally, I, and I'm not taking either one away or anything, so. And I can try it, try it that way the next time because I'm sure we'll have more mail ballots in the future, so.
This was our first though, wasn't it, all mail?
This was, well, I think we've had one way back. We've had one before. I don't know that I was in charge of doing anything with it, so I don't, I don't remember when it was. But anyway, that's the only explanation I have, Elaine, other than, you know, I knew that I would be using a bunch of poll books and this is what the Secretary used or the forms that the Secretary of State had us use, so I just used this as the poll.
And that's a new form since I was Secretary of State's office.
Is it? So that's, that's why here. And like I said, I put the numbers here, if you want to count the pages, go through and count the pages, but you're right, it would be a heck of a lot easier if you had it, you know, if I had put it in the poll book, probably.
So there's a number.
This number is the number that should be on that over there, right through that form. Yes, that.
You know, since we're critiquing, this was not a critique on you, but as Secretary of State, and I wonder if you could even shoot them a email and just say, when your permission said this, so that you don't have to be responsible, but it seems to me it would be smart of them to put 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 20 right here so that at a glance you see, oh, there's nine on this rather than 1, 2.
Right, exactly.
So that would be my only suggestion and it's not too, and all choices to our Secretary of State's office.
I used to be Deputy Secretary of State in charge of elections, so that's why I'm fanatic about this.
And everything changes drastically, it seems like.
But that's what we did. We used this as the poll book because I had to sign them in anyway. And since they're asking this, and, you know, just sign them in here, then sign them in here, and I found in the past, the more times I have to do certain things, the more mistakes I made. And so I just tried to curtail, but, and because this was supposed to be filled out, I think that's why I didn't fill out the poll book as well.
And it makes sense.
Yeah, but I put, and I thought about it, you know, I really did, I gotta be honest with you, I thought about putting it in the poll book, signing each one into a poll book. And then when I thought, okay, but there's going to be like 3,000, I'm thinking in my head, 28, you know, there's going to be quite a few, so that's going to take up quite a few of the poll books, not that that would matter, but just, you know, I think with all the different things I was thinking about at the time, this seemed to be the most efficient and the, and the less time.
One, when you go downstairs, look in, just grab any poll book.
And see.
And see how many are in there because I flat can't tell, but.
Yeah, yeah, and I can't tell you every name, to be honest with you, but yeah. But the next time, I can use a poll book if you prefer that, like, you know, that's not a problem. I'll just.
Depending on how many. Yeah, you can get in there. I mean, I don't much have to do a dozen.
We have to use these anyway, so the poll book is just.
Repetitious.
You're going to do all these names twice.
But I can check that out.
Just out of curiosity, you know.
But what we did was we used this as a poll book and then there's that sheet there where I put the numbers down of all, every day, every day that I received and how much I received and how many voided and rejected and how many were received by mail and how many were received in person. That's what that report right there is. And then the tape, of course, is your machine, your actual counting machine, and that tells you how many people voted and that type of thing. And then the very bottom report on that is a computer copy of how many people actually voted. It will answer these numbers up here. If you go to that very bottom point, it'll tell you how many ballots were actually sent and it's on the front page of that report, Elaine.
On this?
Yeah, yeah, go to the next page. And that's another report that the computer spits out and go one more page if they choose. And I put tapes on there so that you can see, kind of understand right there. That should, that first one should tell you the total number of people that voted, which is your first number here. And then number of rejected ballots, it should also agree with what you have here. And then there are 18 voided and then that gives you your total number of how many people, how many were, total number of ballots is right there. So that should fill out that whole top part of that. And then if you go to the next page, it gives you your number of not returned on the top, oh, yeah, on the bottom, you're right, Elaine, you're on the bottom. Tells you how many ballots were not returned.
1164.
I know.
Wow.
We have like 4,000, close, close to 4,000 registered voters in the county. So, you know, when you look at it, you think, man, 2,900, that's cool. That's, it's really good. Actually, it's really, really good for a school or an odd, odd number, you know, or an odd election or a municipal. Municipals, we're lucky if we get 500 usually.
If the hospitals were kept.
Yes, exactly, I think so too. Because the hospital had to be sent out almost to the whole county, everybody, but the three ports area voted to be out of it. But, yeah, so that's what really brought the numbers up.
And municipal would have been just a city too, which is like a third.
Even with the city, we don't usually get many people for a city election. So, so I thought, no, I thought the numbers are really good because of that hospital. You know, but even like a school election or anything like that, we rarely have over 500.
Which is sad, you know.
It is sad. It is sad. But anyway, so that's what I did. That's, you know, as I entered it, that's how I did it and then we went together and put, got the reports together and so that's how.
Sorry, I was questioning you there.
Oh, no. No, you know what, it's hard when you sit down and you look and you think, wait, you know, this is different and that's, you know, I felt the same way. I don't feel sorry for questioning, I appreciate your questions because then that makes me all the better because then I'll go downstairs and I'll think, okay, she's right, we should, they should have a numbered thing. And I was thinking the same thing, wait, this just doesn't seem like enough, but without repeating everything and like I said, how many do we have to use in order and since I have to throw this out, you know, there was just a bunch of things that I put together and I thought, this town, what do we do with? So, but like I said, I can do the poll book and use that.
And then I want to know how many.
Okay.
Because if there's only 500, and I can't say for sure.
Right, yeah.
Even if.
Or 5, 10.
Or we're saying, if they would remember these.
And I thought about doing that, except that I thought about putting the numbers next, but I thought, well, there's 20. 20 is an easy number to count, you know, 20, 40, 60, 80, 100, and then whatever's on here. And like I said, after this one, then I only, I only put the one set on it so I didn't need to go and put a different date on there as well. So, I just, you know, maybe I talked a easy way out, I'm sorry, made it harder for you guys, I apologize if I did that, but.
Because I was thinking, poll book, okay. You see a poll book here.
Right, regular poll book, yeah, yeah.
So this should be, this is 11.
So, what, 10, 23 is 111 and that should match that date total on that page right there, 10, 23. And then if you add the two together, plus if there was any, and there wasn't on this day, if I remember correctly, that should equal, so the last two columns on that should equal the 111. So if you had one that was voided or rejected, then it would be the last three columns should equal the first column.
I ain't home, is it? Is it left or is it? That's for like 134, that's.
Yes, yeah, that one page. And then after that, I did it.
All right.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wrap my head around that for a minute.
I do the same thing.
Yeah.
That's why I was questioning. Where's the poll book? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Do you know if I can do anything else?
Okay.
I just want to know how many in the book, in the poll book.
All right, I'll be, I'll send that up to you. Do you, you have your phone?
Yep.
I'll get it to you right away then.
Thank you. All right.
There you have it. And a mail ballot election is a ton of work on the computer and not a lot of handwriting. Everyone needs, they need to get ballots coming in mail, they need to get people dropping them off in the office, it's just, it's.
So we should restart counting.
So this is, so I see what you're doing. That's all we came in on, is this poll return.
Right.
The 24th actually starts through all the rest of this is the 23rd.
Okay.
So, yeah, I did that day. Terminating on different weekends.
Sometimes that can be an asset.
Well.
I got over two.
Loss count?
Yeah, I was 13. Yeah, I guess not. Try, try going through it again.
Just please.
Okay. I'm gonna go out loud. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, okay. I might have to do a little more stuff, really. Anyway.
Out of those 20, who's that were rejected? The other 18 were voided.
Okay, so this number of rejected ballots, that's the 20 then? No, that, that's 20, we put 20 on that line.
Two that were rejected because.
No, don't do that. Where did you put 20?
I haven't anything yet.
Okay. If number of rejected ballots is two.
Okay.
And number of voided ballots would be 18.
Right, okay.
And that matches right here from the report. The number of ballots sent is 2901.
That's the first one, 2901.
I thought I'd bring it up. There was 1,050, yeah, so it might have been a better idea to put it in there rather than to do that or maybe do both sheets.
Well, I could check with the Secretary of State on that and see, can we do either or do we have to do or, do we have to do that one or do we have to do this one?
My preference is this one because it's.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, because it's.
I mean, the numbers are there and all we have to do is look at the end and test to see the rejected ones.
Right.
Yeah.
This is how they're doing it now. This is how they're doing it now.
Well, I'll ask them if that's a necessity. And if it is, I'll just do both of them. I mean, it's not a big deal. It's just a, like I said, to me, the more I have to enter, or we have to enter, you know, maybe we could have one person do that, one person do the poll book.
And periodically check to see where.
Yeah, and where's that you're at.
Cause I've done that on a lot of elections, you know, when they were candidacy. Or recount that.
Right.
And give it, give it lets, and stop periodically, okay, what number you add, what number you add.
Right, exactly.
Make sure.
Especially when two, when you're hand counting, that's a good way to do it too. Fifteen fifty-eight? Oh, oops, sorry. Got excited there. Yeah, so did I.
You kiss me, ten years off, you should be alive.
I'm not sure I have any left.
I do, yeah.
Seventeen oh-four? Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I easily could have made it. Should be seventeen seventy.
Yep.
You might have not counted, or you might have counted, not counted some of the rejected ones or anything like that. I don't know what.
Oh, I didn't count rejected. And aren't they listed here and then?
Yeah, yeah, it should come out to seventeen thirty-seven, I think, with the rejected ones or the voided ones. And then there should be seventeen seventeen without those.
All right. Well, do you want me to count again? Do you want us to put it into thirds and each of us count them and?
You've got the calculator, go ahead, write a tape again, just please.
Double check me twenty.
And then you have the, the bottom of that checker, the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, okay, so do each page individually so we can see where my error could have been. Good idea. Okay, so one-eleven, that's, this matches.
And then Elaine, that should match on that page too. That one-eleven, what sheet comes out, that sheet.
This would be nineteen, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, one hundred, not twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, two hundred, plus that nineteen page, plus one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, skip thirteen. That's two forty-one? Oh, and this one counted, this crossed out one, so two forty-two is correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's what that sheet over there should say. Now, that's with everything, okay? This sheet here is with everything that Elaine has. Should be a two forty-two.
Do we have to?
If you're gonna.
I see.
What day were you working?
Sixty, twenty.
Forty-fourth.
Eighty. Two, three, three, forty.
Okay.
Just in the same. Eighty, one hundred, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, two hundred, twenty, forty, two, two forty-two, that.
Is on the match.
Twenty-fifth.
Yep.
Twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, one hundred, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, two hundred, twenty, forty, sixty, eight, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, two seventy-three.
Yep.
Okay. Twenty, forty.
Mm-hmm, yeah, Catherine, you're gonna count the rejected, you're gonna count every sixty to get.
Reach those numbers. Eighty, one hundred, twenty, forty, sixty, one eighty, plus one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. So one ninety-six, that matches.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, one hundred, one hundred seventeen, that matches.
Mm-hmm.
Oops. Twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, one hundred, nineteen.
Hold it, that doesn't match.
Well, then there's.
Nineteen plus two.
Voided.
All right.
So one twenty-one, is that the correct number?
It's one seventeen.
On the tw- thirty-first? Thirty-first, she's working on.
Thirty-first, I've got one twenty-one.
Yeah, and that's what she has.
Okay.
Okay. I thought you said the nineteen.
Well, plus those two voids, shows right there, the two voids.
And I didn't count those at first. Now we're on the first of November. Twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, eighty-one, two, three, four, eighty-five.
Plus your two voids, which you won't have in there, but you will have the handfuls.
Okay.
Eighty-seven.
Okay. And then for the four with twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, one hundred, twenty, forty, sixty, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Plus two.
Plus sixty-nine, plus two voided?
Mm-hmm. And there must be every, you're rejecting the.
There's certainly a couple that I missed there, so twenty.
Four.
Okay.
So minus one.
Okay, so it does concur then.
So what do you have?
One sixty-eight?
Plus two void is one seventy.
Yes.
Okay. And then for the fifth.
Twenty, forty.
Thirty down here, you're gonna total those.
Yeah. And somebody else I'm sure is writing these down too.
Other, and their Elaine's double checking.
Yeah, that'll work. Not sixty?
No, because it was rejected, so we actually can count it.
Sixty, eighty, one hundred, twenty, forty, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So it's actually one forty-seven, minus one rejected for one forty-six. You have that?
No.
With it?
No.
What do you have?
Oh, one fifty-two. Because, um, there's a whole list of ones that, that should be in, um, in your pile. There's a whole list of people who, um, voided their ballot because they couldn't find it. Should, may I look at the list?
Mm-hmm.
May I look at what we have?
This report.
And then there should, yes. Okay, thank you. All of these here. Oops. See, this is on the fifth. These all requested a second ballot and never returned their first ballot.
Okay.
So their ballots were all, um, they were all voided. And somewheres, I have that counted for right here, Elaine, on this bottom line, under the voided, where it says, um, one fifty-two, fifty-eight, eighty-eight, and then what says rejected one and five voided. Do you see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that's what these are right here. They were, these five were voided because they couldn't find their other ballot or they never even received it in the mound. And so we had to void the first ballot and then we had to, um, give them a new ballot.
Why didn't their, their new ballot count as a provisional then?
We just voided it. Oh, no, their new ballot? Because I knew that they didn't vote it because I was right. Because I avoided it as they, I had everything checked in and then I avoided it as they came. So if it came, it would have said two ballots received. And then I would have ended up voiding it there anyhow. But it never showed up as two ballots being received.
Okay. That makes sense.
So, and that's what these are right here. They're all in with this. So there should have been twenty when you counted these all together.
Mm-hmm. And there was.
And I apologize, I didn't put it on the sheet, so.
So it's one ninety-six, should that be one ninety-five with the one reject or addition?
You're gonna be taking, you're gonna be taking twenty away from whatever total we get. So it should be one ninety-six.
Okay.
Minus twenty should come out to the, well, it should be not one ninety-six to answer your question. I think you have to do the twenty-fourth over because I don't think it came out with what Elaine had on her sheet.
One twenty-four. Okay, so. Twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, one hundred, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, two hundred, plus the nineteen that we missed, plus one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Plus, was there half on, plus these ones, this is mine. That's two forty-one.
Should come out to two forty-three. So how many voided ballots was on that day, Elaine?
This one says two forty-two.
Yeah.
Adding the nine? Oh, that's the nine from the other sheet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So where's the line?
So, two forty-two plus one rejected is two forty-three.
Right, okay.
Okay, I match.
All right.
Or we match, whatever.
Okay, so that's, um, I didn't write down, I might have missed one and I haven't gone back to double check them all. Do you want me to add those numbers then?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And I'm writing where you are. Seventeen thirty-seven. Oh, you're, I misunderstood, okay. Twenty-five. One eleven. Two forty-three. Two forty-two. Two seventy-three. One ninety-six. One seventeen. One twenty-one. One seventy. One fifty-two.
Oh, goodness gracious.
And then add your five at the top. Your three and your two.
No, I put that in with the twenty.
Oh, did you?
You re- just again, with that fingers, hit two buttons.
Twenty-five. One eleven. Two forty-three. Two forty-two. Two seventy-three. One ninety-six. One seventeen. One twenty-one. Eighty-seven. One seventy. And one fifty-two.
Plus five.
No.
No. Okay.
Sorry.
Seventeen thirty-seven.
Yes.
All right.
No, I put, now what I did is did twenty-five of the first three lines. It was three, two, and I thought, no, we just do it easy way.
Okay, all right.
And then minus your twenty, which are your voids?
Seventeen thirty-seven would be seventeen seventeen.
Yes.
All right.
And then if you take your tape and you look at your tape, that number should match your tape.
We've got these all out of sequence.
That's. I believe the tapes are divided from, um, city and, and county.
There's a number here of eleven eighty-one.
That is your own, your county or your city, one of the other.
Yeah, that, that should be the county.
That's.
Those were, those were everyone that could vote on, on the hospital, but not on the.
City, okay. So then above that, Elaine, you should have something that says five eighty-something.
Say five thirty-six.
Five thirty-six, that's what I got.
Okay, so add five thirty-six and you're eleven eighty-one. What does that mean? Well, also on your tape, you'll see that one decided not to vote, the short one. So that would be one, there was one on there that decided not to vote for it. I'm not sure if it was in the city or if it was in the, um, county. But in one number, you'll see that it was, um.
And that'd be vote one.
Yep, there you go.
Yeah, and that vote tracks all of that. If somebody circles two and they were only supposed to circle on that, say overvote. If they just decide to skip a race, it'll say undervote. So somebody, you know, like, I think it was Jack Sensei who was on opposed, um.
That was.
Yeah. Yeah, so a lot of people didn't even vote up, stayed asleep in the morning.
So that would make a difference. Okay, and then all, everybody that's on there, if you go to your sheet again, you can tell how many people got how many votes. And then that, um, the reason I put that on here is just to certify those numbers, so that you can certify those numbers, um, by looking at the tape and you're doing it and then I'll lose on the canvas sheet.
Yeah, when we run those ballots through the machine, excuse me, we, we'll open all the envelopes and we usually put the ballots in stacks of twenty-five in the stack room. So when you run them through the machine, it's, it's just kind of like putting clothes in an over-rain washer. You just kind of, one at a time, when you get to twenty-five, you set that stack aside, make sure the machine reads twenty-five, take the next stack, run them through fifty, you know? And that just kind of helps keep the numbers. So you know, if you have one stack that's got twenty-six, um, you can recount the ballots right then. You don't have to go over and count seventeen hundred and seventeen, you know? It just kind of keeps you in check all the way through.
So the actual ones are these down here?
The five thirty-two and the eleven eighty-one.
And those do equate to seventeen seventeen.
Yeah, because the, the machine always gives you all zeros to start with, to let you know that there's been nothing on the card, that everything is ready to vote for the election. If there's any numbers up here other than a zero, that means you're, you, when we get a card in, we have to confirm that it will accept every voter, every person that's on the ballot. So we'll run a couple of test ballots. If we don't clear those test ballots, these numbers would say two or three or how many test ballots we went through. So, but you can clear those, and then, so these numbers should all start at zero until you get to the total page, total numbers at the bottom.
Okay, so for Jackson's, I have four hundred and fifteen.
And that's not, I don't think that's the total. That, that's just either city or county, or no?
No, because the county.
No, because the county rejects. Pardon?
I've got five thirty-six up here for Jackson. You had said.
No, four fifteen, then there's thirteen. There were write-ins, and then one oh eight were undervotes. And that gives you your five thirty-six.
Hmm, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Missing it.
So that's what you'd be using as the five thirty-six. Oh, no, 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 you're right, I'm sorry.
Four fifteen.
It was five thirty-six.
Or four fifteen.
Four fifteen plus thirteen plus one oh eight is five thirty-six.
But you're not putting that on?
No, I put only four fifteen.
We're just doing the four fifteen. Okay.
Because those others are write-ins and undervotes. Okay, next, I have Angie, Janet Carroll, at two twenty-eight. Pat Miller at two twenty-two. Gerald Sanderson at two thirty-two. Write-ins, there were seven, undervotes, there were two, overvotes, there were two, I'm sorry, and undervotes, there was three hundred and eighty-one.
And we don't do the over- or undervotes, we don't have anything on the canvas for that, so.
So that's six eighty-two total.
For, for the three of them.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And Matt West, four twenty-eight. There was fifteen write-ins and ninety-three undervotes. On the hospital levy.
Now you're gonna have to add the two numbers correct for the hospital levy.
It was three eighteen. Against was two seventeen. Undervotes was one.
That's not the total. Here we have, you should do it.
Hey, Eddie.
I don't mind if they were, not any city or anything, they had to vote on.
It's not hospital, okay. So then add that, four, five sixty-two. And against, six nineteen. You'll put the two together.
So four total was eight eighty. And against, two seventeen plus six nineteen, there's a total of eight thirty-six.
We needed to have two numbers for each one, because one's county and one's city. So those first numbers should get off, four against, that two something, city, and then five sixty-two has to be the county, so.
So your total was eight eighty? Franklin, your total was eight eighty on the four, and eight thirty-six against?
Eight thirty-six.
Against.
So rolls said no max, didn't they? Six nineteen, and four was five sixty-two.
So you do like six nineteen against, and if you take that from that, you'll find out what the city was. Number here, and if you take that from that, you'll find out the campus.
So what was Macam?
Or should be.
Yeah, the city one on that, four.
Three eighteen.
Three eighteen.
And against was two seventeen. Three eighteen here. And two seventeen underneath here, and here.
Oh, yeah.
So those are from the city.
Okay.
And then you show.
Oh, I don't have the number of ballots said sent, and my paper's a mess, so I think we should use yours. But you can tap the numbers.
On your report, under, underneath that one, that's right there, click to it.
Why don't you hold that for me?
I would love it.
Again, go again.
Right there. Twenty-nine oh one. And then we need the number of ballots not returned and the total number of ballots cast. Which is thirteen.
Yeah, on the next page, you'll find the numbers that have not voted. That was the eleven sixty-four.
It shows the twenty-nine oh one, and ballots not returned, eleven hundred and sixty-four.
So then if you went down here, subtracted these three lines from the top line, you'd come up with seventeen seventeen.
Okay, did you guys hear that?
Yeah, when we went through the last half, you're seventeen seventeen.
Yeah.
So that's.
Add these together and subtract it from that.
Right, and that's where you go with seventeen seventeen.
And if they have a couple, somebody else subtracts my.
Four fifteen projects. Angie, it's two to eight. That is two to two. Gerald is two three two. Matt is four to eight. For the hospital levy total is eight eight zero. Against is eight three six.
Eight three six?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Thanks for putting up with this, Joyce.
Oh, no. That's okay. It's hard to follow somebody's stats, you know, if you're not doing it, so it's, it's hard to do that.
A lot of computer work.
I try to make it as easy as possible, but.
Sorry, people, we'll be done here in just a minute.
Nice work, guys.
Good job. Did you mention anything?
I did. Yeah, no kidding.
You know, interesting, for the next election, you should come, let me do the canvas again. So next time, we'll, we'll. Got to keep this person happy.
Sorry.
No, that's.
Handwriting, you have to handwrite all this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joyce, for your good job.
Yeah, even though it's a mess.
Yeah, thanks. Good morning, everybody, sorry to finish the canvas. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And good morning. Public comment. Sorry, may I have a public comment? Senior, we've got a couple of minutes here, and we can do some mail items.
This looks exactly true.
Okay, first Premier Bank statement.
Actually, that's all new, not the, not the agenda. I just put in the agenda for the meeting Wednesday, and then the upcoming public hearing. But there's a letter from M.B.A.C., and there's, it's new, and there's a letter from, that a couple of gentlemen brought in this morning, that they wanted to read for the record. And those are both new.
There it is. First Premier Bank statement.
Let me just switch pages. Right, it is, yeah.
And I'm going to continue on while you're looking back. To the Broadwater County Commissioners, dated November thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, we wish to correct Commissioner meeting minutes from October fifteenth meeting. It is reported in the published minutes that Commissioner Slavka attended the Elkhorn Advisory Committee meeting, where they have policies ready to present. First, we are the Elkhorn Restoration Group, a citizen group of diverse interests committed to working together to develop restoration project proposal within the Elkhorn Mountains to help in restoring the mountain range to a more historic fire resilient ecosystem. We work with the public and managing agencies to move, pardon, project proposals forward. First, we do not develop policies. Our interest is in seeing restoration project work implemented that we, as a diverse citizen group, can support. The Elkhorn Restoration Committee works to the Montana Forest Restoration Committee, and is a local committee utilizing a set of thirteen restoration principles. We work in concert with the Memorandum of Understanding with the Elkhorn Working Group, a citizens group working on a broader range of issues. If you have questions regarding Elkhorn Restoration Committee, please contact Tom Williams, Chairman at two six six five seven six oh, or Alan Christoperson, Co-Chair at four three nine oh one nine seven.
Yeah, I'll comment later.
Okay.
I call it the Advisory Committee, it's, uh, Restoration Committee. So I just quoted it wrong, and also, I think in the original one, I said they had some policies taken by Steering Committee. They're strictly an advisory, to, and they work with the, the Land Force or the Restoration Game, and, and the public, pretty much. So I had the correction for that.
Any other comments?
I will comment on the First Premier Bank. This is what we have for the trust board, for the cabin sales. And the total market value is now two point seven four five million. So it's, it's definitely going in the right direction, looking very healthy. That board can use anything over the two point five million dollar corpus to fund local recreational activities. So they've got a nice, nice state to work with.
Would you mind reading that report again?
Yeah, I could do that.
Sorry about that.
I rounded it, and I rounded down erroneously. It's two million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-one cents.
We'll have to come on like this, Mike.
Okay. Morning, Professor.
Morning, Mike.
The record might come with my name. Did you get my email?
Yes.
Okay. As you recall, on September thirtieth, the Board of County Commissioners obligated the Title III County Fund, four state Title III funds. Last year, we received a thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. And we had instituted forty-five day public comment period. That comment period ended on the fourteenth of November, and we're on the agenda today to give up spending authority, spend that money as proposed. The only comments I received back was from the U.S. Forest Service. David Nunn had mentioned at the Local Emergency Planning Committee that he was in support of your proposal to spend that money. He said that the Community Wildfire Populate Protection Plan, the CWPP, needed to be updated. We do that in a tri-county state area through the Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group. And we have the three counties work together, because that's kind of where the sponsor fires. And the old one is, I think, updated two thousand and five, and we must update that. Now, Broadwater County will have to share what's cost. And the rest of the money would be spent, of course, first of all, we'd spend the money on reimbursement county agencies for providing emergency services on public lands, federal lands, actually. And I haven't got any claims on search and rescue or the fire department at this time, when they have some in the future, particularly with hunting season. And then half the money would be spent for the purposes of Firewise Community, like FireSafe, Firewise Community Programs, public education, the other half would be spent on the Community Wildfire Population Protection Plan. And I'm just here today to answer your questions and public questions, and move forward on this project.
Questions, comments?
No, I think you're staying off pretty good.
Has the Commission received any comments, emails, or anything? We had two legal notices, one originally for September, and then we also had a public legal notice in the newspaper, I think it was last Thursday, down in the store, talking about the same issue. I haven't received any comments, other than the four, so.
I have not seen anything.
They indicated we're spending the money properly according to the federal law. They're glad to see that we're working together with the, uh, Los Angeles County, the Fire Safe Working Group.
My only question is a dotting of Ts and crossing of Is question.
Sure.
Should this be a public hearing? Should we schedule a public hearing for next week? It's already been in the paper for the required time, but just so that it is a hearing versus a business item on the agenda would be my only thing, thought. And I didn't think about that until just now, or else I would've mentioned it earlier.
We can do that.
Okay.
What time works good for you next week, Mike?
Oh, whatever, you want to do that on Monday?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Okay. That would be on the 20th?
No.
Oh, 25th, excuse me.
Yes.
25th. Whenever the Commission has opportunity, Tom. Want to do it in the afternoon? You probably have some stuff scheduled already in the morning.
We have a public hearing at three on Weasel Road, so Weasel Creek Road. So we could do any time. We have a 10 o'clock, a 10:15, and a 3 o'clock. So any time in between there would work really good.
What about in the afternoon?
What do you want, 1:30, 2 o'clock, 2:30?
1:30 would be excellent.
Okay.
Okay. This would be Title III. Okay, very good.
Thanks, Mike.
You bet. Last, I'll give you a little update on DES activity. Coming up this Thursday, we have LAPC meeting at six, excuse me, 3 o'clock, yeah, at the Forest Service Valley. And then last Wednesday, we had our little Broadwater County.
Tabletop.
Tabletop exercise with hospital, fire department, Sheriff's Office, dispatchers, public health. And I neglected to send out a mail to the Commissioners and the press. I did not get that. But we had a very good turnout with 58 people show up, and it was very good. We sat down and talked about how would we evacuate the hospital if they had something like a fire or something. And different agencies interacted. We went clear up to that clock and we got out there exactly at nine. And we decided we're going to come back in January and kind of finish the exercise. We got so far along in the process that we didn't quite finish it. We kind of knew that. We were taking out a pretty big volume of planning. And they decided they didn't want to do anything in December because of Thanksgiving holidays and everything else, and Christmas. So we're going to get together. Our design team will continue this process. We got as far as getting the patients ready to evacuate. They decided they were going to take them across the street to the ambulance building as a safe shelter. They called out a patient staging area, then they brought in the ambulance to transport them outside the community. But we never did get far enough to say how we're going to take care of those patients. And it was a very good exercise. It was excellent. A lot of people participated and good discussion. We learned a lot. We know how we have to coordinate better through unified command with Sheriff's Office, Fire Department, Hospital. And I think it's something that we need to look at. We need to work together as a team, all the emergency response agencies. With a fast-moving fire or need to evacuate, like hospital or any rest home type thing, those patients can't take care of themselves. They don't have the ability to evacuate or know where to go and stuff. So it's a good project we're working on. We've learned a lot and we have lots more to learn.
How would we move in those people?
Well, they were going to prepare them. How they got is they're going to move them by wheelchair. And they were calling in extra staff to have a disaster callback list. And then the fire department immediately decided that we're going to page out all the fire stations, all five of them, Winston, Dunkirk, Tosh, and Dunkirk. And then we're going to page Townsend Fire Department again. So the real fire department was coming in and also called in search and rescue to help take those patients across the street because the staff would be getting them prepared and stuff. They had the public health nurse. Her staff was going to go over to the ambulance building and get prepared and receive those patients. So kind of all working together. We're kind of talking that, but just a discussion. We didn't set any policy. We had some twenty different feedbacks in our evaluation sheet. We got some really good feedback. People want to train together. They want more of that tabletop discussion, a little bit more. We identified areas we need training and coordination. And I was really excited. I mean, we showed a plan for thirty and we had fifty-eight.
I think that's wonderful.
It is true. Very good. Excellent. So the community's way behind it. And we try to work together, coordinate, and get ready for disasters. Something like that. Something that realistically happy. School's got some ideas, things that they want to work on. Any other questions for me?
You know, it used to be, and maybe they still do, that the ambulance crew or maybe it was the entire group, put together a disaster, a mock disaster, whether it be a train wreck and...
They still do that.
Do they?
Oh, yes. This is how we started. We want to do this in the fall, kind of plan. And we realized we're going to have to have at least two tabletops. Now, the Billings Clinic or Deaconess Hospital in Billings, we talked to them. They took two years to do theirs, to actually go through tabletops. They went through four tabletops before they actually planned the physical exercise of evacuating only twelve patients from their homes. It took them that long to plan that. Because it takes a lot to get a lot of volunteers involved, understand each other's... Well, we broke down into functional groups. We had the hospital, the ambulance together, we have the Sheriff's Office and dispatchers, and then we have the fire department. And we had different questions for the different groups to work through. How would they unify command? How are they going to communicate? What's the most important thing? When the fire department got there, they got there with one engine and three firefighters. They had set their priorities, either they're going to go suppress the fire or are they going to hook up to a fire hydrant and hook into the sprinkler system to boost that? Or they're going to go inside and talk to the nurse and see about evacuation? They had different choices. They had different firemen, had different scenarios if they wanted to do set different priorities. That's, it'd be based upon the actual event. But they're looking at the different options. They know what's really important. And then same with the staff, they practice on call people back. They discovered that the callback list, the disaster callback list, needs to go from the old telephones to the texts. We need a redundant system. I don't only call them on landlines or on cell phones, but send out a text and bring all your staff in once a week. Of course, not all the staff's going to respond, just like fire department and ambulance. You're not going to get everybody in the community at the same time. So they're going to hospital, calling all their employees to assist. And they'll actually get the patients ready and give them audio to the street. They would call from bed curb and curb into the next, you know, so that's okay. We got a lot to talk about here. But it was fun. We learned a lot. It was fast-moving and we ate pizza.
All right.
No beer. Oh, some people wanted beer, but they didn't get it. And they're not going to get it. Any more questions for?
It sounds like it was well worth, I don't think.
It was really good. I was surprised that the, they already got into it. Everybody got into it, got deep. And we kept identifying different issues. Well, that needed to be addressed. We needed a policy to... Fire Department right away made a decision, they want to page everybody out. Of course, they're used to doing that. They go to more calls.
So the scenario was that there was a fire in the kitchen at the hospital?
That's correct. That was the scenario. An employee who, one of them was seriously burned and another one had minor burns, and they also had a heart attack patient in the ER. So the priority was to get those heart attack patients in the St. Peters, but bringing their ambulance in and take them over. And then they were going to bring a helicopter and a summit that would be out of Belgrade to fly that patient. Probably to airport somewhere, they could Learjet fly the burn patient down to Salt Lake City, the burn center, usually how they do that. Or they could bring the Learjet right into, right into our airport. Usually when they have a helicopter, they don't like to land in town because of the safety issues, particularly up in Darby. It's fantastic. The scenario, flight crew usually comes in with a flight, they like to go to the airport. And then they like to have an ambulance crew or somebody pick the flight crew up, come to the ER, and then they get to talk to the patient and to the hospital and the doctor. And then they package the page and, you know, structure it, a lot of packaging, and take them to the airport, and then they fly the patient out. Of course, in a scenario like that, they were just going to load the patients up in our ambulance, get them out of the ER, while the fire department was trying to suppress the fire and evacuate throughout the residence and go out to airport and wait for Learjet or helicopter to come in. But we talked about all those different scenarios, different options. And how long would it take for the fire department to get here? Raiders, or Thompson, or Winston, or Dunkirk. And we had all that planned in there. So the slowest thing in deployment for an emergency, either a wildfire or anything, is they actually, the paging, the resources, has to be done immediately early because it takes time for firefighters or any teams to leave their homes and go, go to the fire station, put their turnout gear on, get the truck out of the station, and then load up and drive to town. So if you want to toss the fire truck from here, it takes about twenty minutes after you page that resource to get here. It's kind of the rule of thumb because that's quite some time. It could take longer. You know, sometimes that's half of it. Depends where the firefighters are, if they're out riding horse or riding tractor, it takes a while to turn around, get back to the rig, get back to the fire station.
Well, and Winston would be all of that too, wouldn't it?
Probably would be. Depends where the firefighters are, what they're doing. But it was a good scenario. And we think, we're trying to do things that could help our community, things that realistically might happen. Yeah, when you plan for, you know, the head can damn fail at Yellowstone Park, that's one thing that could happen. But more realistically, it's something our community more likely would have. But we keep all these scenarios in mind, you know, the different disaster, everything could happen to our community, like a train wreck, chemical hazards, something, chlorine, they had over at Hilton a couple of decades. All those things could happen to our community. Any other questions?
Sounds like it was job well done.
Well, it was fun. I enjoyed it. They helped. Tremendous participation. We've got a great team. We've got a great community. A lot of great people.
Okay. I'm going to see you then next Monday at 2:00?
That'd be after. Know what time we're on, 2:00? Excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any questions for you?
Thanks, Mike.
I apologize for that.
All right.
Or anybody. Two words left out. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Dr. Mail.
A letter from M.B.A.C., dated November 13th, 2013. Dear Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you and for your continuing support of Montana Business Assistance Connection, M.B.A.C., to provide economic development assistance in Broadwater County. While M.B.A.C. has been conducting economic development in Broadwater County for over fifteen years, M.B.A.C. has particularly been busy this past year. We have engaged with following projects in Broadwater County this past year. Working on the draft comprehensive economic development strategy document and scheduling regional public hearings. Community development block grant economic development application for Broadwater Health Center through the city of Townsend for a CT scanner and building. Three, monitoring transportation alternative grant application for Townsend. Four, joint land use study between Helena and Townsend, Lewis and Clark, Broadwater, and the National Garden. Sale of land to Shagwell Farms. Loans to the Townsend Marine, the Stock Horse LLC, PFM Manufacturing, and possibly Canyouvery KOA Campgrounds. We also did several loans to homeowners to improve their home energy efficiency. Negotiating M.B.A.C. participation to construct new boat docks for the lake. Maintaining an office in Townsend staff one day per week. To maintain this level of service to Broadwater County, we use M.B.A.C. funds and funds from the U.S. Economic Development Administration that requires local match. I request that Broadwater County provide $15,000 for M.B.A.C.'s 2014 economic development services as it has in the past years. Best regards, Chris Schelke.
Questions, comments?
No.
You want to take it under advisement? The $15,000?
Yeah.
Here is a, from DQQ, U.S. African, U.S. Fish Wildlife and Services, from the Bozeman Fish Technology Center. And also for the Livingston Municipal Pool. And they're looking for public comments.
For the Livingston Pool, what is it?
No, tell me. Livingston Municipal Swimming Pool. And then for the Bozeman Fish Technology Center.
This is from Montana DNRC. Dear Lightning, enclosed is an executed planning grant agreement for your files. As stated in Section 7 of the agreement, you'll be paid 50% of the total grant amount within thirty days of receipt of an approval draft preliminary engineering report. The remaining 50% will be paid within thirty days of receipt of an approval plan preliminary engineering report. The preliminary engineering report shall be in accordance with the current uniform application supplement for Montana Public Facility Project. I have also enclosed a state of Montana vendor invoice to be submitted for payment. The vendor is Broadwater County and is billed to DNRC. Additional forms may be found on our website and on the web site. Thank you for your application. We look forward to working with you, not only in the development, but also in the funding and actual construction of your public facility improvement project. Sincerely, Pam Smith, Program Specialist.
An email from Sean Higley. Commissioners, I spoke with Steve Story this afternoon. Mr. Story indicated that the DNRC would find the Deep Creek project very appealing and could possibly get this project up and running as early as this winter. If you can agree to the wording of this letter and send it to Mr. Story at your earliest convenience, we will be able to start on an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, with the county. At this point, he is looking at Deep Creek as the highest priority, which will fit within our existing work on this drainage. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you and have a great weekend.
And that's the letter he sent. It was sent to all of us via email. I just put it on letterhead.
To Mr. Story.
Yeah.
The letter to Mr. Story at DNRC Floodplan Engineer. Dear Mr. Story, as Chair of the Broadwater County Commission, I am writing a request on behalf of Broadwater County to see if there is any funds available or probability that a detailed study can be performed within either Deep Creek and/or Missouri River floodplains. The Missouri River section would start at the end of our recent completed detailed study area that was part of our updated FIMM mapping process and end near Townsend, I'm sorry. The Deep Creek study area would start at the confluence with Missouri River and continue upstream to the Highway 12 bridge of the Deep Creek. From your conversations with our floodplain administrator, Sean Higley, there may not be enough funds available to perform both projects or possibly even complete one project. However, we would request that you come out to Broadwater County and scope both of these projects to see what can be done. Mr. Higley has performed a review of both of these floodplain areas. His field review of the floodplains in these areas suggested the floodplain that has been previously delineated is only is very deficient and does not properly, pardon, does not properly represent the actual floodplain that would be inundated during a large flood event. The original Zone A and recently digitized version of Zone A floodplain do not match the topography and the grounds that these areas likely due to a number of complicated factors such as split river flows, change conditions on the ground, and other factors. The Missouri River section is particularly difficult as residents within this stretch are required to spend significant amount of dollars to prepare a floodplain application. Mr. Higley's determination is that these studies are necessary due to increased development within these stream corridors. These floodplain studies would have a significant benefit to Broadwater County, resulting in a significant benefit for dollars spent to the community. The Missouri River section will be challenging due to the split flows and survey issues in deep running water. However, Deep Creek can be surveyed, pardon, Deep Creek can be surveyed fairly easily in this location and the floodplain is not very wide. Reducing the overall cost associated with this type of study. Typically, Zone A floodplains tend to work well where applied to simpler areas with limited development. However, Broadwater County would be well served by a more detailed study to properly outline the floodplains in these areas. Please let me know if this study could be, if I may consider, and if there are available funds. I would be more than happy to provide additional information sincerely, Elaine Gravely. So...
Get us some more information.
That's what we talked about last... That's what we talked about last, last week when Sean wasn't here last week. But that's what we talked about in regards to Sean's visit last week. And that is getting the additional study to correct some of the errors in the floodplain.
I have one request, Gravely, is that one?
Is it? Okay. I made one editorial correction to the letter in the first paragraph. It was just bridges, floor caps. So I will move that we sign the letter pertaining to floodplain mapping.
It's moved in second that we sign the letter to the N R C regarding the floodplain mapping. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. There's a claim from Bob and Gammazola Ranch for twenty-eight eighty, for two hundred and forty yards of gravel for one mile of road. This was Bob will do the hauling and no charge to the county. The road up into their swinging place was considerably damaged, I guess you'd say. Brenda's not going to make this. When they were doing this, a search, the gentleman that was missing. And the road was, is now in terrible condition. And so I think we will consider us to pay for this gravel and Bob will do the work.
I'll second it to get to discussion. I do believe we do need to complete the claim before we can vote on it. It does not yet have a signature.
Okay. Where are we going to take the money from?
I don't know that that's necessarily our call at this point. I think it's up to the department headed to, come to us, give them the request or proposal.
So, Secretary Mosky. One mile of road. And it says Bob will do the hauling and work, no charge to the county. And the Department of Administration, Local Government Services Bureau. And this is our letter to them. Dear Kay Gray, thank you for your quick response to Ms. Debbie Kelly's inquiry yesterday. We appreciate your willingness to work with us. We will be performing with Kim Downey of Denny and his house as certified public accountant. Certified public accountants to perform a biennial product for Broadwater County. Ms. Downey will also be assisting with the annual financial report. Due to the various setbacks the county has experienced this year, we are requesting a one-month extension to file that report with penalties in interest way. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to working with you. Sincerely.
With the Department of Revenue halting our ability to put out taxes this year by reevaluating the county on October twenty-first, well, a week later, it actually put us quite a ways behind in the initial reports done. So to avoid any penalties, Department of Administration suggested that we put forth that request. That's what it was. It was emailed out.
All three of us need to sign it, please.
So I will move that we sign a letter to Department of Admin regarding our financial statement and a biennial audit.
All, it's removed and seconded that we send a letter to the Department of Administration regarding financial audit being extended to a two-year audit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. Payroll in amount of hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and forty cents. It's moved in second that we approve payroll, hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and forty cents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The same, the total, motion carried. A claim to the Townsend Star for twenty-two dollars. Notice of public hearing for regular quarterly meetings. Needs for the Board of Health, regular quarterly meetings.
I'm not sure we need a whole amount of this complaint.
I think so. Claims in amount of eight thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty cents.